Good evening, everyone, and welcome to USD 305 Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, there is an addendum to the personnel report, and that is at your place.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for the agenda? Ann?
Madam President, I move we accept the agenda with the addendum.
Jim, second. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next on our agenda is recognition and presentations. We have Superintendent's Excellence Awards. It's always nice to see a full audience out there with parents and grandparents and friends and neighbors and anyone else that you'd like to bring along for this. It's great. Good to see you here.
This evening, we will be recognizing the Superintendent's Excellence Awards. Our first group of awards goes to South High School students who attended the Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference. Eleven students attended the state competition and four individuals placed, including one that qualified for Nationals in Anaheim, California. TJ Slade is their sponsor. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the National Business Professionals of America students please line up as well? Slade. We'll go ahead and read the names, and we'll honor Reese. Kaylee Lovett, Emma Smith, Arianna Nunez, Avantron Nguyen, Kayden Castle, Donovan Reeves, Isaiah Hayden, John Morton, Brandon Woodhull, Connor Talbot, and Reese Altman, sophomore, placed second in fundamental spreadsheet applications and qualified for Nationals in California. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Our next group of awards goes to South High School wrestlers who qualified at state.
Keenan Wendell is their coach. He's unable to be here. Will Shawn Copeland, assistant coach, please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the wrestling students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Carson Ochoa, Jr. Derek Sherwood, Sr. Brandon Jeffries, sophomore. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Next, we recognize Central High School wrestlers who qualified at state. Shannon Peters is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy? And will all of S- line of Central's wrestling students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Drew Burgun, Sr. Drew had a season record of forty-one and placed first at state. Taylan Peters, Sr. Taylan had a season record of thirty-five-three and placed second at state. Cooper Char, Jr. Cooper had a season record of twenty-seven-nineteen. Cayman Munson, Jr. Cayman had a season record of twenty-eight-nineteen. Slade Adam, sophomore. Slade had a season record of thirty-one-six and placed third at state. Alex Hernandez, freshman. Alex had a season record of thirty-one-seven and placed fifth at state. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to South High School swimmers who qualified at state. Dustin Bergart is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy? And will all the swimming students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Paul Armbrust, Sr. Keegan Xline, sophomore. Isaac Frost, Jr. Kyle Eislin, sophomore. DeAndre Koeman, Alex Linnenberger, Keaton Munsel, Brian Taylor, Seth Thompson, Clayton Brown. Congratulations all for a fine showing at the state championships. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to Central High School swimmers who qualified at state. Dustin Bergart is their coach. And will all the swimming students please line up as well? Gage Burmaster, Sr. Cooper Cobb, freshman. Montgomery Heisman, sophomore. Isaiah Holtberg, sophomore. Michael Perkins, Jr. Nick Rost, Jr. Adrian Ruvalakaba, Sr. Ethan Schulte, Jr. Stotin Windholtz, Jr. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you? Our next group of awards goes to South High School bowlers who qualified at state. Seth White is their coach. Seth is also a track coach, and there is a track meet going on at this time, so Mr. Stevens will stand in. Will all the bowling students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and Mr. The girls' team placed fourth at state, and the girls are Jordan Van Arsdale, Lauren Lust, Bella Olson, Jessica Salinas, Bailey Berry, Mackenzie Billings, Stella Gestel, The boys' team placed eighth at state. Carter Lambeth, Braxton Morical, Griffin Peterson, Dalton Stelter, Kayden Berry, Jordan Anderson, and Andrew Frochner. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you? Our last group of awards goes to three bowlers at Central High School who qualified at state. Joe Wilkerson is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy? And will the bowling students please line up as well at the front? Mr. Wilkerson is also at a track meet this evening. Kaylee O'Connor, Jr. Preston Miller, sophomore. Bradley Gaywith, sophomore. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Thank you. Next is approval of consent agenda items, which include the minutes of the March 12, 2019 regular meeting, personnel report, treasurer's report, investment report, journal entries, and prove encumbrance listings, which include to Frontline Technology and the amount of eighty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars twenty-one cents for the annual maintenance agreement; to U.S. Foods for the prime vendor contract for food and nutrition services and the amount of one million six hundred and thirty thousand dollars; to B.D. Ford Distributing Incorporated and the amount of twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars for the food and nutrition services chemical vendor contract; to Edgenuity and the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the virtual classroom and web administrator site licenses for Central High, South High, and the diploma completion program; to Learning A through Z and the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars fifty cents for licenses; and to Dell for the purchase of desktop computers, laptop computers, and Chromebooks in the amount of one million nine hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move approval of the consent agenda items as listed. Emma Doherty, second.
Move it in second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public forum. At this time, it is open to the public for any comments that they would like to make. They may come forward at this time. Moving on to action agenda, we have next, South High BPA National Competition Out-of-State Field Trip with TJ Slade.
We want to see you.
We need to hear you on the microphone.
Thank you. And hear you. There's a mic there, too. You can move it up.
Okay. Awesome. So, this is my first time doing this. The National Leadership Conference for BPA is going to be May 1st through the 5th in Anaheim, California. Now, what would happen is we would travel out on, and if you want me to go over the specifics right now, I can, since this is my first time. What exactly would you like me to talk about during?
You can talk about the general, and if anyone's concerned about specifics, they will ask.
Awesome. Okay. So, May 1st through the 5th, we would depart from Kansas City after taking a USD 305 vehicle from Salina to Kansas City. We would fly out Wednesday morning and then arrive there. I have a, the first event that I would have to go to is the Kansas BPA meeting, which would take place around 8:00 PM. So, as long as we left in the morning there, we would make it on time for that event. Thursday, we would have the opportunity, both myself and Reese is still here, to actually take some of the free tests that she's available to take. Her event is on Friday, which she would compete in, and then, as well, on Saturday, we would have the award presentation, which lasts till about 11:30 on that day. And then, Sunday, we would fly back into Kansas City, take that vehicle back to Salina, and be ready for school the next week.
Right. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes.
Have Salina people been to the Nationals before?
The last sponsor was Sue Montoy, and I don't believe she has gone in quite a bit. So, it has been a while since somebody's gone to Nationals for BPA.
That's great. So, we get to go.
Quite an exciting opportunity.
It's a, it's a great opportunity. It's a, it's a new experience, I think, for Reese and then myself as well.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Motion? Gary?
Madam President, I move that we approve the South High BPA trip to Anaheim, California on May 1 through May 5, 2019, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Ann? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Congratulations, and we want you to have a good time, but learn a lot. Okay? Next is our discussion agenda on the ACT Aspire Assessments with Lynn Xline.
We are in our second year of administering the ACT Aspire Assessment, and based upon feedback from administrators and teachers, we would like to make some recommendations about changes to that assessment to better meet student needs. And so, I want to just start by explaining to you that there are two options when you give the ACT Aspire. You can give what's called a summative assessment, which is an assessment that has results that come back about a month and a half later. It feels a little bit more like the actual ACT. Or you can give an interim assessment, and an interim assessment has immediate results. Our teachers would really like to move away from the summative assessments and to the interim assessments so that they can use them more effectively for instruction. So, both of the assessments are on a scale that allows you to predict post-secondary readiness, and you'll remember in, oh, it was probably February of 2017, we talked a little bit about the fact that there is, there have been multiple studies done, that there is a high level of convergence between the skills that are required for a post-secondary school, success in post-secondary school non-medial courses, and entry-level work where you have, where you can secure a job where you have the room for upward mobility, and you have the availability of a wage that can support a family of four above the poverty line. So, what we know is it's important for our students to all graduate with this level of skill that the ACT would say is college-ready. Okay? So, with that, both of the assessments, whether it's the summative or whether it is the interim, they will tell us whether or not our kids are on track, starting at third grade, given that learning continues at the same rate, whether our students are on track to be college-ready. At that early level, that's really important because it gives us lots of time to intervene and provide support, and then for students that are ready to provide enrichment, and so that we can make sure that doors are open for kids. So, what exactly is it that we're recommending? I want to just give you a comparison of what we've done versus what we are recommending that we do in 2019, 2020, if you would so approve. At grade three this year and last year, we gave the summative assessment. That is the assessment that has the delayed results. It takes about a month and a half to get the results of this assessment, and we assessed our students in reading, math, science, and English. In the spring, we didn't assess them at all. What we would like to do is move to the interim assessment, immediate results as soon as the student is done taking the test, and we would like to assess in the fall in reading and math, and in the spring in math. You might ask, why not reading in the spring? The reason that we wouldn't do reading in the spring is we have a really good assessment of reading using the benchmark assessment system. But we would, but that is a teacher-graded assessment, and we would like that fall score to tell us, how's our K-12, K-2 programming doing in terms of getting kids where they need to be by the beginning of third grade? Okay? So, in the spring, we would just give math. Why math? We don't have a good assessment that we give throughout the year to assess math instruction, and we want to make sure that kids are getting a year's worth of growth during a year. Okay? At fourth grade, we're currently giving the interim assessments, and we would continue giving the interim assessments, but we would like to add science in the fall. What that would do is give us a chance to look at K-3 science instruction and plan for grades four, five, science instruction, and then we would also like to continue to give that math in the spring, same reason at grade three. At grade five, the, we would do, we continue to do the interims, that's what we've been giving at grade five, but we would give only the math in the spring. Again, the same reasoning, more time for instruction is really what we're recommending, and we already have the reading assessment in the spring from that benchmark assessment system. At the middle school level, in this year and last year, we gave the summative assessment in the fall. We gave no assessment in the spring. We are recommending that we give math and reading in the fall and, and math only in the spring. At seventh grade, we've been giving that interim assessment with immediate results. We would like to recommend that we give all four interim assessments in the fall. That gives us a picture midway through middle school about progress. It gives us immediate feedback, and then again, math in the spring. At eighth grade, you can see we've been using interims, math and reading. We would like to add science in eighth grade and, again, finish up the spring with that math assessment. At grades nine and 10, we have been giving the summative assessment because our principals felt like that best mirrored the real ACT. The issue is being able to use the results for instruction. If we moved to the interim assessment, the teachers would have access to the item analysis, and they would be able to have immediate results, and they would be able to use that to drive some instructional decisions. Again, then finishing up with math in the spring so that we have that pre-post of algebra. Algebra is critical as a gateway to upper-level math, and so we really do want the pre-post there. Why do no assessment at 10th grade? 10th grade in the spring, we actually have Kansas ELA, and we have Kansas Math. And the other thing that has changed since we made this original proposal is that the state of Kansas is now paying for all 11th graders to take the ACT, the real ACT, and for them to be able to take the ACT work keys. So, our 11th graders, through their individual plan of study, we're talking to them about which one of those assessments, or both, is the best match for what your post-secondary goals would be, and we're encouraging students at the 11th grade level to take that assessment. So, instead of that 10th grade full battery, we're encouraging that 11th grade assessment that is paid for by the state. Again, there are four reasons that I would really suggest that we consider this. The first is that the summative assessments do not have the same level of reporting. We get the same information about whether or not a student is on track to be college career-ready, but what we don't get with the summative is that ability to do the item analysis. That item analysis allows a teacher to look at the level of rigor that would be required reading-wise, math-thinking-wise, problem-solving-wise, graph-reading to be considered college-career-ready, and then they can look at that and compare that to what are we assessing on a daily basis? What's the level of instruction? Are we asking students to do things at that level of rigor? The second reason would be that immediate feedback, we get the results back right away, and we can actually use those for instruction, because we are using quite a bit of class time to test. We want to be able to use the results to change something for the better for kids. And then also, it would result in a decrease in testing time. So, here is the time comparison. At several grade levels, we are down. You'll notice that at grade seven, it is up sixty minutes because we added the spring math. At eighth grade, exactly the same. At ninth grade, we're up fifty-five minutes, again, spring math, and at 10th grade, a decrease of two hundred forty-five minutes. So, our goal is always to make sure that we have the assessment information to determine whether our curriculum is working well, whether it's meeting students' needs, but that we're also providing teachers information that they can use to teach kids more effectively. And we feel like this recommendation would better do that. Cost comparison, interesting. What we feel like is the more effective assessment is less expensive. So, it's twenty-five dollars per student for that ACT Aspire summative. For the interim, it's nine dollars a student, and so what we would recommend is purchasing that nine-dollar-per-student test package. With that, teachers could opt, and principals could opt, to test up to three times a year if they wanted to. If they had a student where they really felt like, you know what, we need a little bit more information, are we making progress like we want to make? They could give this assessment an additional time, and they could do that in all four subjects or one of the four subjects and get immediate results. The other piece that comes with that nine-dollar package that does not come with the twenty-five is what's called a classroom assessment. The classroom assessments are indicator-specific, so this teacher could pick one standard and have a five-question mini-assessment if they were questioning student mastery on just one standard. But that would not be a district requirement to assess like that. The district requirement, if you support this proposal, would be the subjects and the times of year that I've suggested in the previous slides. So, with that, that's a lot of information. Questions that you have for me?
Any questions or comments? Ann?
Yes, it took me a while to know that ELA was the same as English, I guess.
I apologize.
But where, when is the state ELA? You said it's a state, a new state test or something like that?
Actually, the state of Kansas tests English Language Arts, and so it's a com, it's really more of a reading-based test, although there is some, somewhat you would think of as English as well in there, that they test that at grades three through eight and 10. And math would be the same way. Science would be three through eight and 11. And then there, there is a social studies assessment that is at four, seven, 11, I think, four, seven.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Gary?
Thank you. Yeah, the social studies, you just said, it was a question I have. There is no test for social studies with the ACT?
Actually, it's kind of interesting because on the ACT, there are four areas. The reading assessment is predictive of success in entry-level, credit-bearing, social studies coursework. I'm guessing because of the level of reading required in social science classes. So, the reading is actually aligned to social studies. The English is aligned to Comp 1. The math would be predictive of Algebra 1 success in college, and I'm missing one. Science would be predictive of biology, which I tend to think of as a sophomore-level course, but it's, but the reading is actually the social studies predictive measure.
Okay. Thanks.
So, absolutely.
Carol?
Yeah, thanks. Who specifically would be responsible for getting the information for an individual student, let's say, in mathematics? Student takes the test. Who's responsible?
So, how would a teacher get that information?
Yeah.
The, the teacher actually has a login, and they can look up the information on their own. They, the building testing coordinator can get that information, or the district assessment office can. There is an individual report that can be printed. What we do is we roster students to the teacher who's administering the test so that they have access online as soon as that assessment's done to those reports.
And how do we know that those tests then are being used to facilitate student growth?
I can tell you what we've done in math, as an example. We actually used the results of the ACT Aspire interim assessment in mathematics in an instructional leadership session, and we worked with principals and coaches on looking at the level of rigor on those released items versus the level of rigor on, we had them bring classroom assessments that were being administered, and we just had a conversation about how do those match up? What, and we used what's called a depth of knowledge. What is the depth of knowledge required? Is it like, think of questions like Jeopardy versus questions like you might see on Master Chef? Okay, as kind of a dichotomy. Is it more like this, where it's one right answer, or is it more application, higher-level problem-solving? And so, we did an analysis like that. They went back and did that in small groups with teachers, and then looked at what was happening classroom-assessment-wise. On the summative, you can't do that. The only thing you get is this overall raw score, and so even being able to see what it is that I can change for instruction is very difficult. But that, we're doing that through our professional learning communities, and our coaches are helping support that.
All right.
So, but to be perfectly honest, it, what's being done with it varies by building, and that's something that the Teaching and Learning School Improvement Department would continue to promote and lead. Our assessment director has met with our- Our assessment director has met with our testing coordinators to promote that as well.
All right. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Um, encouraging students to take ACT in, at 11th grade, you said?
Yes.
What, does the district get results or access to information based on that performance?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I will get the ans, I, I'm sure we do. When, I don't know. We get ACT, if the student releases their, their own ACT score to us, we get that. But I'll check and see whether we get like a cumulative report on the ACT scores at the junior level from the state. So I'll get that to you.
Gary?
Yeah, Lynn, finish her note.
I've got it.
Okay. Maybe I didn't understand from Carol's question, but do the students or the students' parents actually get scores from this? Is this something that's talked about at parent-teacher conferences?
Yes, actually, there is an individual student report that shows whether the student is in need of support, whether they're below that benchmark to be considered on track to be college-career-ready or whether they meet or exceed it. And so there's a graph that has a line showing the trajectory of performance over time that this, we can print out and that we actually send home with every single student. So the parents do get this information. In some cases, it is given at, like the, the interims were given at conference time. The summatives had to be sent home because the results were so delayed. So we will have a consistent way that we get that information out to parents and that will be part of a conversation that will happen with parents. They'll get that information twice a year now for math, once a year for those other areas. But that's important information for a parent to have and it's great information for them to have as they're doing their individual plan of study where I need to enroll in more rigorous course, courses, additional courses, electives to be ready.
I was gonna ask, do the teachers get additional time to analyze and study this and gather the data so that they can present it to the parents or is that time already worked into their schedule?
That is, that would be a building-by-building decision, how that would work. My suggestion would be that the, our department, that the Teaching and Learning School Improvement Department next year works with some talking points to help systematize that so that everybody, that's the best way that we've been able to get the message out and make teachers feel comfortable that they know how to interpret the reports and get the information to parents. So, yes.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Lynn.
Absolutely, thank you. If you have any other questions, please let me know.
Next on our agenda is school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Tuesday, April 9th is Salina Education Foundation reception, which is also the next date of our board meeting, 4:30 PM. Saturday, April 20th is the Chamber Legislative Meeting at the Chamber at 8:30 AM. Sunday, May 5th, Retirement Reception and Recognition at Lakewood at 3 PM. We'll have school board reports and I'll start with Carol.
Oh my goodness. I did have an opportunity to attend the March 16th Chamber of Commerce Legislative Forum. You had an opportunity to read about some of it in the newspaper. I would like to comment about one thing in particular and that was that a question was asked about the two bills that were currently being considered, one from the House and one from the Senate regarding education finance. And one of our legislators had absolutely no opinion on either because he had not read either one. And given the fact that education spending is really key to the entire budget process in the legislature, I felt at that particular point in the game, it was really irresponsible, reprehensible, whatever kind of word you might want to use, that that legislator was not familiar with that key piece of legislation. Those key pieces of legislation. Anyway, so much for my opinion.
Emma?
I wrote postcards to all the legislator regarding the Senate bills that are concerned with public education as well as phone called them, telephoned them all and encouraged them to vote for this or not vote for that bill. So anyway.
Thank you.
Gabe?
No report.
Ann? I attended the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge at Kansas Westland where students from our high schools were showing their theoretical businesses. And it was quite interesting. I took my husband along. I think he might hire one of the companies to do his next vehicle repairs. And I also finished my last Coronado songwriting workshop this morning, which is the last of my arts-in-the-schools program for the year. So that was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Parks and Rec Advisory Council with Gabe. Some interesting things going along there as they try to balance workload and finances and the challenge is there. And I was at the track meet this afternoon before the meeting.
Okay. Gary?
Well, Nedra and then Aaron and I spent Friday and a little, holiday Friday and a little bit of time Monday interviewing our LIFT applicants. And anyone who thinks kids are not bright or they don't work hard or, you know, kids these days, they don't have work ethic, that kind of thing, they need to interview those kids. And I know we've got an uncle of one of the kids in the audience tonight, he's hiding now. Anyway, bright kids, great answers to our interview questions and great resumes of all of them, but, and, and that's the Education Foundation Reception on the 9th. We'll introduce those future, hopefully all of them are future teachers here in USB 305. They're all going to be fabulous educators.
Done?
Done, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. I attended the district leadership team for school improvement and things are really happening there. I think we're moving forward and, and April, we'll be able to bleed out some more paperwork and, and we'll have a report done, I think. Attended Salina Education Foundation grants. Pam McIntyre will be announcing who all received the grant money. And that's always lots of fun, being able to spend the money on, on projects that have been requested. Attended Equity Council meeting along with Dr. Hardy. We're planning a presentation here pretty quickly on what all's been accomplished this last year. And I think there's been a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work done in the test questions and compiling all of those answers and, and accumulating everything to, to meet what, what is evolving in Salina in that area. Served Match Madness for an hour for Salina Education Foundation. That's always a busy place and they even have food trucks out there, so what kinds of food trucks? And it's turning into a big project. As Gary said, I attended the LIFT interviews for, for two days, one full day and then just a little bit Monday. And our students are exemplary in many, many areas and this is another one of them. Those people that interviewed are just really remarkable. I'm very proud to be a part of Salina Public Schools with that. So I think that's all that I have done. Oh, I did also attend Chamber of Commerce. Don Weiser, of course, is retiring. Will miss seeing him at that helm. He's sort of, I called him Mr. Salina and, and he kind of grinned at that. Farm Expo Week is coming up this week, as you've seen the signs out and about. Legislative meeting is Saturday, the 20th, which they host. The Entrepreneur Challenge they host, which Ann, Ann went to. They have Travel Kansas. In the Travel Kansas magazine, Salina's featured on the first two pages of the, lots of little pictures too. It's all over Salina and everything Salina does. I was really impressed with that. Conventions here and they showed that Salina, they can count the rooms in Salina and the beds in Salina and how many are used for each convention and each thing that comes in. And that is remarkable to me about doing that process. And so everything is up and it's looking good in Salina. There will be a Stop Human Trafficking at the Salina Annex, April 18th, at 1:30 for $10. T-I-A-K.org is where you can find more information on that. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. Those are specifically for Salina Central and South students. And it is kind of fun. I saw Ann there as well. The students, you write, Ann, the students that were doing the auto repair is, they were fun to talk to. They've been doing it out of their garage for a while. So I think they really have a future with that. It was fun to visit with them. So I think there's, it's really interesting to see how hard they work and some of them have very good presentation skills, very good salespeople. So Equity Council, as Madam President said, did meet last week. We are getting closer to having goals that we can bring to the Board of Education and give a report on the year. I would like to mention that Shannon and Jennifer do a lot of the work to make that happen. Shannon does all the data for the surveys that she breaks it down aggregate-wise and to help us out on that. So that really goes well. Yesterday, I spent the day in Topeka and it's always good to come home after a day there. I don't know how they do that day after day. Sometimes it's a little discouraging. And so when you come back and you go, like this morning, I started Oakdale Elementary, got my kid fixed and talked to staff and I thought, everything's good. Everything's good. I do have to compliment our legislators. All of them gave up time to visit with me at length. It was interesting to go down the list of bills that we have concerns about and they really did listen. I do appreciate that. I couldn't get to Senator Hardy though. He had the seat for the day in the Senate. So his job was to go down the list of all the bills and allow for discussion and some took quite a bit of time. So he did text me back and forth. I told him he looked really good up there, so he appreciated that. But I really want to point out that Representative Johnson, I, I appreciate the way that he understands the political process. Because if you sit there and you just listen or you read what we get from KSB, it can be discouraging. You think, you, you took the time, some of our board members took the time to make calls and send emails and you think, man, is there any, did that help at all? Well, we know Representative Dirks is in our corner. You know, her and I talked yesterday and she voted as we would hope she would. And Representative Johnson, he didn't vote in the way I thought he would, but he explained to me, his rationale was to get it out of the House, get the school finance bill out of the House so we can go back to the Senate and then can debate back and forth. And I understand that he was, he was explaining to me, there's a lot of efforts going on behind the scenes to try and clean those bills up. So some of the embarrassing things that are in there that we look at, we go, how did that happen? That those will be peeled off over time. So it was, it was good to have that long discussion and really see the long game for them as to what they're planning. So don't be discouraged. Hopefully it'll play out, you know, good for the kids of Kansas. That's what we're looking at that way. So like I said, the nice thing is when you come back after a day there and you, you come back and you go, man, I don't know about this. Then you start your day in our buildings. You see our teachers doing tremendously with our students, how, how detailed they are working even with kindergarteners and all those things. It just makes you feel good. So we know great things are happening in Kansas schools and that's the good, that's the good news. So, Madam President, that was my day yesterday.
Okay, thank you. And next on our agenda then is executive session and we need to go into negotiations. I need a motion. How long?
10 minutes?
10? 10 minutes? We can start it. Give us five minutes or four minutes to get in there. I'm trying to figure up also, six minutes to get in there. Let's do that.
So you want to start at 5:50?
Yes.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:50 for 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize solution of the negotiation issues. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6 o'clock in the board conference room.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. I didn't, I couldn't hear anything.
He was very quiet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, 7-0. We will move into executive session in five minutes. If you'd like to stay, you're certainly welcome to stay in this room and we'll invite you in afterwards.
Heading back to model working and.
Oh, you're really?
Yeah, yeah. I, I want to work for 16 years, but then I was, I didn't go to, I'm going October, February, December, January. I'm back to the hour and a half every day.
That's incredible.
The hardest part. And taking this off was the way.